Twenty-five, and so after six o'clock here in the city council chambers at three forty-five, High Street, Mayor. Roll call, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
A motion to excuse Councilmember Lauer for reasons known to City Council.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're going to start off an offering of prayer by Councilmember Tim Nab, following the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we're gathered this evening in the work of our city, asking for your guidance, thanking you for your care of our first responders, and for your continued bounty to the city of Hamilton. We pray you will watch over all those in military service, keeping our nation free, while working with other nations in the name of world peace. Bless our residents as we strive to keep our city a welcome, safe, and conducive place for all to work, live, and play. Father, we ask these petitions in your holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got some special presentations this evening. First, we have Black History Month awards presented by the Department of Human Services.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Cremens, and I'm with the Human Resources Department. As you know, February is Black History Month, and this evening, we would like to recognize two of our employees. First of all, Ms. Donnell Giuliano unfortunately took ill, and she's at home sick, was not able to make it, but we've asked her manager, Mr. Dave Jenkins, to accept in her behalf. So, without further ado, Mr. Jenkins, would you like to come up? So I'll read a little bit about Ms. Donnell Giuliano. Ms. Giuliano is an administrative assistant for the City of Hamilton Water Reclamation Department. Ms. Giuliano was hired as an administrative assistant in October of 2022. She grew up near the Outer Banks of North Carolina and served in the United States Air Force for eight years, starting in 2006. She was stationed in Mississippi, Virginia, Utah, and she was also deployed to Iraq. After leaving the military, she stayed home with her son while her husband served. They later moved to Ohio to start a new chapter and to be closer to family. After a few years, she returned to her military roots in administration, which felt very familiar and comfortable. She then applied her military experience to civilian work and is happy with her career path here at the City of Hamilton. Ms. Giuliano believes that Black History Month is a time to reflect on the accomplishments of Black people, past and present. She's always been inspired by Maya Angelou, whose resilience and grace continue to motivate her. Professionally, she's not faced any racial challenges, largely due to the diverse environments she has experienced in the military, where she worked with people from various backgrounds. Mr. Mayor, would you like to?
Let you go ahead and speak first.
I would just, excuse me, I'd like to say that since Donnell has joined the City of Hamilton, she's become a valuable member to the Department of Infrastructure. In her role as administrative assistant, she has had many responsibilities and duties that she performs for both the Water Reclamation and Electric Production divisions. Some of those specific responsibilities include timekeeping for thirty-eight employees, creating purchase orders, and processing invoices. She works hard each day to make sure these tasks and many others are completed in a timely manner and are completely and completed correctly. And observing Donnell perform her duties on a day-to-day basis, I would conclude that she incorporates the city's values of respect and sense of urgency into performing her task. I'm proud to call Donnell not only a coworker, but a friend, and she is very deserving of this recognition.
I know that's all got to be true. You work for our utility department, and you've got to be a top-flight, top-notch person. I didn't know about her past. I mean, we're talking about somebody who was in the military for eight years. She pledged her allegiance by joining the military, and that says a lot about her, her goals, her administrative skills sounded to be amazing, and raising her family here. I mean, she's a hero. She's a hero in this building, or in her building as well, where she's at. But we're proud to have her on the city team. City of Hamilton Celebration of Black History Certificate of Appreciation, 2025. The following award is given to Donnell Giuliano in honor of your continued service to the City of Hamilton and community. We thank you, presented February twenty twenty-five. And we thank her for choosing Hamilton, Ohio, for her career. Thank you, and you'll make that get to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, next and lastly, we have Officer Laney Ash, police officer for the City of Hamilton. Mr. Ash, would you like to come on up, and I will read your bio? So Officer Ash was hired as a police officer in November of nineteen ninety-nine. He decided to become a police officer at the age of nine years old, after he had a conversation with Officer Hill. He studied criminal justice in college and worked as a probation officer before being hired by the City of Hamilton. He later transitioned into the school resource officer role and has held that role ever since. His family and community in Hamilton have motivated and supported him throughout his career. Despite the challenges in law enforcement, he remains committed to serving with integrity and empathy. I like that. Officer Ash feels that Black History Month highlights the importance of Black Americans and their contributions, which should be celebrated year-round. He enjoys learning through documentaries and untold stories. Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech remains a powerful source of inspiration. He's most proud when seeing students he has supported in schools grow into successful members of the community. His mom, who showed him love and support, and has been the greatest role model alongside high school coaches who encouraged him to reach his potential. To better support Black professionals, Officer Ash believes companies should recognize the uniqueness of each individual employee's, their experience, and create programs that foster understanding and inclusivity. He aims to treat others with respect, dignity, and honor, and hopes that this inspires the next generation of Black professionals.
All right. Nineteen ninety-nine.
I'd also ask Mr. Robinson to come on up and tell a little bit about. Trent is out of the office, so. Could have called you up sooner.
All right, you're going to hear from him. He's got the wisdom right now.
Yes, please.
All right, so I've worked next to Laney for many, many years, alongside of him, out on the street with him, as a supervisor with him, and most often where you will see him, if you don't see him in the schools, is in our physical fitness room, and he's pushing around more weight than most of us can lift in the daytime. So I know you can't see that by looking at him right now, right? And in fact, that pays off, one of the things that he's most credited for and remembered by with a lot of people within our department is the big catch of the century. Big catch of the century is right out here on High Street at the underpass, when a female was distraught, had some mental issues, and was jumping off of the overpass. And Laney made a rush to her, actually caught her before she hit the ground, might have injured a few of you. He had a few little injuries after that, but it was, to a normal person, one of us, we probably wouldn't have survived it, and then within a few weeks, he was back on work. But he most definitely prevented a lot of serious physical harm, if not death, to her. So he's been credited, that's one of a very famous moment that everyone recognizes him for in the police department. So it's an honor to work with him. The students in the schools love him, and he's been involved not only as a career on working with juveniles, but he's also worked with juveniles in youth sports throughout his life. So he is a testament to the Hamilton Police Department and any Hamilton City employee. So thank you very, Laney, for very much for everything that you've done for us.
Who's here from his family? Now, come on, y'all walked in with me. All of you come up here, okay? Come on up here, we'll make space. I snuck them in the back door of the building, I was afraid the door was going to be locked and we'd all be late. But nineteen ninety-nine, my gosh. You know, you said your mom was your role model, and she definitely had a bright light, and you followed that light, and I'm sure all your family is following the path that you have established, as said by Brian there. Man, this is a great family.
It's awesome.
Somebody's got to get that picture. And I know you've set a bright light for those to follow you, family, school, where you're with the students. So we want to hear from you, but you've got a great family. I can just tell, I walked in with them, and I said how proud we were to have you as part of the city team. I think everybody wants to hear from you now.
Oh, yeah. First of all, I'd just like to thank my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, allowing me to make it this far. I'd like to thank my family for coming out and sharing this moment with me. It's very special, and let's keep it going, from my sons, to my daughters, to my granddaughters, granddaughter and two grandsons. So let's keep it going and keep doing great things for the community and for our family. Thanks.
It's awesome.
One of your family members I know wants to say something. Oh, come on. Introduce yourself and go ahead and say something.
I am Sharona Ash, and I'm so proud of my brother. I'm honored for this moment, and just to be able to see it, and for his grandchildren and his children to share in this moment, and my mother. My father would be here, but we lost him in 2020, and that was a big push. So I'm just proud of you and grateful and thankful, and God just has so much more for
And thank you for choosing Hamilton for your law enforcement career. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm so glad to see you. You did a good job. So that concludes our presentation for this evening. Thank you for allowing us to recognize our employees for Black History Month. I feel that we had two great employees this month. Also, I wanted to note that we have on display poster boards outside of Mr. Ash and Ms. Giuliano as well, so if you'd like to get a picture with that with your family, please do so. And Davey, you can take a picture with Donnell as well. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you. Next is 2024 Love Your Block Community Partners Recognition by Peggy Bang.
That's a hard presentation to follow. Today, or this evening, I'd like to recognize, or we would like to recognize, Seventeen Strong Love Your Block in 2024. We had four very special community partners, and it really made seven, or 2024 Love Your Block even more productive than it normally is. If you don't know what Love Your Block is, it is a program that we have, it's a grant program with Seventeen Strong, and we do exterior home repairs for three to five homes within close proximity in a neighborhood. And these are actually, they're grants, and people in the neighborhoods apply for them. So we had four community partners, like I said, and I want to recognize them because they were so instrumental this year. I'm going to start with Pawnee Water. Eric and Doc, you want to stand up for me? Thank you. Pawnee Water is actually, we call them our hydration sponsor, because they are actually, they provide water for the celebration breakfast, for the summit, for our cleanups, and also for Love Your Block. Very instrumental, always very willing to donate water to our different projects, and I really appreciate them, they're a great partner for us. The second partner we had this year is Lowe's. Tim, do you want to stand up? Tim and Jamie were my contacts, or our contacts for Lowe's this year. They were partners with us with Love Your Block in the past, and then COVID hit, and then they have come back. They reached out, I think, to Michael Ryan, and he forwarded them to us at Seventeen Strong Love Your Block program. I can't even tell you enough about this group. We had ten homes that we did with Love Your Block this year, and we could not have done all ten to the quality that we were able to perform for these homeowners without Lowe's. It wasn't just the wood and the paint and the railings that they provided, they also provided us with volunteers and the expertise that we really needed as volunteers, because with Love Your Block, it's just people like you and I. We're not professionals, we just love our community and we love our neighbors. So to have Lowe's out there on five homes on one day, five homes the next weekend, I just can't thank them enough, and I hope you're back again this year. Great, thanks, Tim. Lifestyle landscape, Andy, you want to stand up? Andy is not a stranger to any of us. He, it's not just Love Your Block, it's micro grants, it's anytime you call him to help us. Andy donates so much time and all of his expertise to this program. Love Your Block, again, could not be what it is without having Andy with us. He's always willing to come out with us the day, the week before we have the project, tells us what we need to order, what we need, how much water things need. And also, the cool part about Andy is he works with all of us, even on the workday, plus he gives all the homeowners instructions on how to take care of their plants, how to take care of the mulch, how to take care of the bushes, everything that we have done, Andy stays until the end, and then we're all really confident that when we leave those homes, that the plants, the trees, the bushes, everything is going to grow just like he has instructed us to do. So I appreciate your expertise, and I appreciate you always being willing to help us.
Peggy, did you pick that picture with me and Councilman Nab out there?
Yeah, what do you think?
Notice who's working.
Thank you, Andy. The last one, Michael, you want to stand up for me, please? Michael May. He was with Jet Power Wash, it is his company, and we connected through another Seventeen Strong board member. He has a power washing business, and he wanted to do something for Love Your Block. So with ten homes, we did ten power washings, right? Mike, we did two days of it, and it was several hours, and he donated his time. It just made such a difference with the project, and I'm not talking just, got to hit it, not just the sidewalks, it's actually, we did some furniture on porches, we did under porches, above porches. I mean, we did everything with power washing. And as you can see, power washing, in the one picture with the blue house and the yellow, you can see the walkway up to the front door, that's the power washing we did. Unbelievable, we had a lot of fun doing it. The homeowners loved it, and I hope, Michael, I hope you understood with the power of what you did for us and the time you spent, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Can I just add quickly to that? I think it's so important to understand the Department of Neighborhoods and what they do to contribute to all of this as well, and Peggy Bangy is a hero in this town for all that she does. But imagine, you see one house in your neighborhood whose lawn is immaculate, all the flowers, and it motivates you around you, and that's what Love Your Block is, and it is changing neighborhoods. When I've gone to those and gone back in a few weeks, you can see not only the neighbors that they worked on, but other houses are like, whoa, I got to get out there now, I'm going to do this, and it really does make a difference in the neighborhoods and the city. So thank you.
All right, our third special presentation is our passenger rail feasibility study update.
Good evening, everybody, members of council, tonight's audience. I'm Michael Gurr, Senior Project Manager for the city's infrastructure team. One of the projects that I've been managing here for a little bit is the passenger rail station feasibility study. A little bit of background context before we get into the presentation. Back in the fall of 2024, at the request of council, our city team was asked to perform a feasibility study on the concept of a passenger rail station here in the city. So with that being said, our city internal team, we interviewed several passenger rail consultants who have wealth of knowledge in that field, and in doing so, we selected ACOM, who has a tremendous background, wealth of knowledge in the industry, and tremendous experience. ACOM did a great job working with our city team, getting, collecting data points. We actually conducted a special council meeting to get some additional context and feedback from senior leadership. And then ACOM did an outstanding job, you know, logging several hours here, doing, you know, some analysis in the field here within the city. So feasibility study was concluded, the report itself, as of last week, it was shared with council, and then we actually, for tonight, are here to provide more or less a understanding, a high-level understanding of the results of that feasibility study, and then at the conclusion, provide an opportunity for a little Q and A. So with that being said, I'd like to turn things over to Dave Warhol with ACOM.
Good evening, everybody, and we would like to really start this presentation by thanking you for the opportunity to serve the city and delve into the possibilities of what could happen with passenger rail in Hamilton. Just like Mike said, we're just going to give a high-level overview of the study process. Some of you may recall I was here last fall, and we did cover some of this early material, but we said we'd come back in February, and here we are. Give an introduction, a brief summary of passenger rail planning statewide in Ohio, just an overview of the current railroad operations in town, review our station site assessment, that we look through seven sites within the city, and then some recommendations for next steps. So we began this process back in the fall. One thing that's important to note, and I'll talk about this in just a minute, the Ohio Rail Development Commission is in the process of beginning some statewide studies, including the three C and D corridor. They're also going to be looking at railroad congestion in Butler and Hamilton Counties here this year, and then Amtrak is also looking at potentially expanding the operations of the Cardinal train to daily operations. So all of that is going to be happening starting this summer in 2025, and moving forward for the next couple of years. This study was done, obviously, before all of that work, so a lot of the assumptions that are built into our analysis are just that, they're assumptions. And so as that process unfolds, you know, unfolds at the state level, you know, some of the assumptions that we put together here will have to be, you know, revisited or confirmed. So I just want to get that out there. Again, we estimated some potential ridership levels for a station here in Hamilton. That was based on existing ridership for similar stations throughout Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, as well as nationwide, and as well as some of the analysis that had been put into the three C and D corridor thus far, and as Mike mentioned, some input from yourself. We did have some coordination with Amtrak on our assumptions. I will say, we did not have direct coordination with CSX or Norfolk Southern at this point, so I just wanted to get that out there. And then we evaluated seven station sites. Two of those sites were recommending to advance for further planning, and we'll go from there. So as Mike said, there's been some interest in passenger rail planning, especially in the City of Hamilton, over the past few years. Back in 2021, Amtrak released what they called the Conexus Plan. It was a kind of a high-level plan for expanded passenger operations throughout the U.S. They identified Hamilton as a potential station stop, whether that was on the Cardinal or the three C and D corridor, which is in the teal there, hard to say, but at least you were on the radar with Amtrak. As I mentioned, ORDC is going to be kicking off a couple of studies this year. One is the three C and D corridor, the other, the Amtrak Daily Cardinal. In addition to that, the Federal Railroad Administration, under the bipartisan infrastructure bill, was charged with looking at passenger rail service nationally, where Amtrak either formally operated service, or where there was a passenger rail service that operated prior to Amtrak. And through that process, there was a couple of routes that were recommended for future planning that potentially could serve Southwest Ohio and Hamilton as well, and we'll talk about that as well. And then lastly, I mentioned the Cincinnati Railroad Congestion Mitigation Plan. ORDC was awarded $2 million from the FRA to do a planning study to look at freight rail capacity in the greater Cincinnati area, focused on the Mill Creek Valley. Essentially, it's going from New River Junction here, just north of town, down to the Ohio River, and that potentially could look at consolidation of the Norfolk Southern line here in town with the CSX corridor. We'll talk about that in a minute as well, but that congestion mitigation plan, while it's not directly for passenger rail, could have an influence on any future passenger rail planning. The three C and D corridor, I think most of you are familiar with, this is a proposed passenger service that would link Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, Cincinnati. The planning for that process is just getting underway. You may recall, about fifteen years ago, there was a proposal to do essentially the same corridor. The Kasich administration decided they didn't want to accept the money from the feds at the time, it wasn't implemented then, but a similar study is underway now. This service could serve Hamilton, but there's not a guarantee for the route or for the station stops at this point. Obviously, the thought is that it would serve the major cities, but there may be intermediate stops as well, which could include a stop in Hamilton. Kind of the timeline there, the beginning first task, which is being completed this spring, is what's called Step One, that's really, the ORDC is defining what is going to be the scope of the project, what are they going to study, and how that methodology is going to work. The actual planning and defining the service will start this fall and move into 2026. And then, you know, future implementation isn't guaranteed at this point, but the planning process will at least get it to a certain point to define what the assumptions are for the corridor. Just real quick, and I think I shared this with you the last time, these are kind of the three C and D corridor between Cincinnati and Dayton. You have ultimately two choices, you have CSX, which we show in the green there, as well as the Norfolk Southern, which goes through Middletown, as well as through Hamilton. Essentially, if there was a connection between Dayton and Cincinnati, it would be in one of those two corridors. Off to the right, or I'm sorry, off to the left on the picture is the Amtrak corridor, that's what's called the CSX Indianapolis subdivision, that runs up through Oxford and up to Indianapolis, and carries the Amtrak Cardinal today. The junction is, you know, a couple blocks just south of here, or it crosses the great Miami, and then it heads down through the Mill Creek Miami, and then it heads down through the Mill Creek Valley, through Sharonville, and down into Cincinnati, Cincinnati Union Terminal. The FRA long-distance study I mentioned previously identified potentially two passenger rail corridors. One would link Detroit and New Orleans, essentially coming through Toledo, Lima, Dayton, Butler County, down to Cincinnati, and then would continue south, down through Louisville, and ultimately down to New Orleans. The other corridor that was identified was New York to Dallas. That would come through Columbus, Indianapolis. They do show it swinging south to Cincinnati, ultimately going through St. Louis, out to Oklahoma City, and then down to Dallas. These two corridors, there is no money identified for operations or construction or equipment at this point, but these were identified as long-term possibilities that could be implemented over the next 10 to 15 years. The FRA delivered their report to Congress in January with these two corridors, as well as several others, actually, for future consideration. Where it goes from here, you know, there's a lot of change in Washington at the moment, so we'll see how that goes. But it's potentially, you know, in several years down the road, that these two quarters could one day serve Hamilton. Currently in Hamilton, there's two Class I or national-sized railroads. That's Norfolk Southern and CSX. Hamilton does have significant rail traffic today, I'm sure you're all aware. There's generally, on a daily basis, 40 to 60 trains that go through Hamilton. Right now, as far as we could determine, there's only one really rail-served customer in the city limits at this point, but it is still a major hub for both of the, both of the railroads. There is a quiet zone that's being considered here on the CSX corridor. The Norfolk Southern corridor, which is in the green on the map, comes through on the east side, and then swings across at Maple Avenue. That carries about 16 trains a day, and these train totals were as of the fall of last year. The Cincinnati Terminal subdivision, which is essentially from where the, the Amtrak junction is, just a couple blocks south of here, that carries about three dozen trains a day, or I'm sorry, about 40 trains a day, and then north of that point going up to Dayton and up to Toledo, about three dozen trains. And then the, the tracks that go over to Oxford and over in Indy have about four trains a day. Some of the station assumptions that we made, looking at ridership, it could vary anywhere from five to 15,000, or I'm sorry, five to 15,000 persons per year on an annual basis. Could be some more, more than that. It really depends, again, on the service that would happen on the 3C and D corridor. Obviously, the more trains you would have on a daily basis, the speed of those trains, and the convenience of those hours of those trains would drive ridership. If there's less trains, and the speed of those trains is lower, you're gonna have lower ridership. But that's based on existing Amtrak boardings in Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, which we think is a reasonable starting point for a city of the size of Hamilton. You know, that kind of equates to, you know, 100 people or less a day. You're not talking about hundreds of people necessarily, unless you had some, a train coming here for a special event, or something like that. But for your routine kind of intercity passenger rail service, it'd be about 100 people or a little bit less per day. So you don't need a huge facility or a staffed facility to accommodate that type of, that type of passenger load. We've assumed that this would be an unstaffed station, so there wouldn't be somebody there permanently every day, selling tickets, that type of thing. But you would have somebody, obviously, there, you know, maintaining the station, providing security, those types of things. Amtrak, or the Federal Railroad Administration in general, if you're gonna develop a new passenger rail station, the intent is, where you can, to have what's called level boarding. And most trains in the United States operate with the floor of the railcars four feet above the top of the track. So the idea would be, you would have a platform that essentially is four feet tall. If you're running next to an existing freight line, you can't really accommodate a four-foot track with the freight railcars because of the width of the, the loads that can be on the freight rail. In our case, we've looked at both, in the stations that we looked at here in town, we looked at both a new level boarding track that would be four foot tall, that would require its own dedicated track for a train to essentially pull over, board passengers, then pull back onto the, onto the freight track. In lieu of that, you can have what's called a low-level platform, and that's what we're doing up at Oxford, and that's what's down at Cincinnati Union Terminal. Those platforms sit about eight inches above the top of track. You can see the picture here on the slide. That lower picture is actually up in Connersville. They redid their platform about a year and a half ago. You can see it was actually just almost put on top of the old brick platform, which is essentially a grade. But that gives you a feel for the difference between the level platform at the top picture, where you can see people can walk literally right on the train car, versus the lower picture with that little shed there, that little tan shed, actually has a mobile wheelchair lift. So if there's a disabled passenger, they pull you into that wheelchair lift and just physically lift you up onto the train. Right now, we're assuming that because of ADA restriction, not restrictions, ADA guidance, there's a maximum amount of space you can have in that gap between the edge of that platform and that railcar. It should be less than five inches horizontally, and less than three inches vertically. And if it's more than that, you have to have some kind of a bridge plate, or some kind of a ramp system to get over that gap. To make that gap that small, you basically need a straight piece of track or a tangent piece of track. In our discussions with Amtrak, they're assuming that we would need at least a 500-foot-long platform. And to have 500 feet of straight track that you can access is somewhat of a challenge. We've assumed a small station building that would include, you know, a small waiting area, restrooms, and a display for Amtrak's information service, or another operator's information service, where you would have a kiosk thing when the train is arriving, that type of thing. Be roughly 2,500 to 3,000 square foot building, you know, single-floor building. And we're assuming roughly a minimum dedicated parking on site of around 50 spaces. As I mentioned, we looked at seven sites that are shown on the figure here. Two of those sites, which are in the orange circles, kind of at the far north and the far south, which we call North Hamilton Crossing, South Hamilton Crossing, because they're essentially adjacent to where those highway crossings are at, or are proposed to be, where there's a sufficient space, there's no development there today, there's sufficient length of track, and operationally, it works with the railroads, and there is reasonably good vehicular access, and at least for the North Hamilton Crossing, pretty good pedestrian access. The other sites we looked at were the Beckett Paper Mill Development Site, just north here, the relocated Cincinnati Hamilton-Daten Rail Station, across the street over here. We looked at the former Norfolk Southern Penn Station, which is around Maple Avenue, as well as Sims Park. And we also actually looked at the, the new Justice Center, south down on Walnut Street. That physically could work with the track, but joint use with the Justice Center, in discussions with city staff, there just wasn't good synergy there. The North Hamilton Crossing Site, that we, what we call North Hamilton Crossing Site, is across from the Cohen Recycling, just south of the, the electric plant there. You can see in the picture, this is where the, the new service lot was constructed for the overflow parking for Spooky Nuke. The platform would be on the west side of the track, kind of in that little triangular area there. The station building would be, would be located there as well. For now, we've assumed that you could have some joint-use parking of that surface parking lot, and have access to the station from that, from that drive off of Third Street. The little yellow stripe there at the bottom of the picture is kind of the conceptual alignment for the North Hamilton Crossing going over the track. You know, depending on how that plays out, one of the, one of the important things for this site would be to coordinate between a potential future rail facility and the North Hamilton Crossing as it evolves, over the next few years here. Depending on what happens with North Hamilton Crossing, that little triangular area is actually privately owned right now by the Corneak Corporation. I guess it's our understanding that those two buildings there, in just south of where the platform are, are not being used today, but it would require at least some acquisition, either as part of the highway project, or as potentially part of the rail project. But this does provide good connectivity to the Cohen Development Site, as well as, you know, it's literally right across the Black Street Bridge from Spooky Nuke. So there is obviously some development activity in that area that would be well-served by the station. Depending, again, on what the capacity needs to be for the freight in that area, there may be a need to create a dedicated station track if Norfolk Southern and CSX decide that they need more than two tracks that are out there today. We, we looked at both scenarios, and we think, you know, you could fit, fit a station there either by using the existing railroad tracks, or with a new dedicated track. The other location is south of town, just south of the, kind of the new South Hamilton Crossing, just south of Grand Boulevard. This area is, has a lot of space. This parcel was actually, at one time, called South Hamilton Yards by the Baltimore and Ohio Railroad. It had been around for, for several years. There used to be approximately 10 tracks down there. The tracks were removed about 15 years ago, I believe. And the property is still owned by the railroad, but it's pretty flat, and there's pretty sufficient space there to develop a, you know, a platform, either using the existing track. There's actually four tracks down there now, the two mainline tracks operated by CSX, and there's a siding on either side that don't appear to be used at the moment. The challenge with this site is that there isn't really any vehicular access back there today, or pedestrian access. So you would have to build an access road back to it. We showed a concept coming around from, from the north side, off of Pleasant Avenue, under the bridge, and coming in from the south. It's a little difficult to see on the image here, but in the middle of the, the site, there is actually a, a right-of-way that comes from Pleasant Avenue that could go more directly into the site, but it would require some, some private property acquisition there to make that access road work. This does have the advantage, it does have pretty good access right there, next to Miami University's regional campus, and, and it could also support other development on that parcel as well, just besides the railpassenger station, if you wanted to do any other type of industrial, commercial, or mixed-use development there. We did a cost estimate at a high level. This really just was comparing the differences between a high-platform and a low-platform station. You know, there would be some differences between the North Hamilton site and the South Hamilton site, but at this level of planning, we felt that these were at least good planning numbers to keep in mind in terms of budgeting. Obviously, the, the high-platform site that would require a new track is roughly $6 million. The station site, where you were assuming you were using a low-level platform adjacent to the existing track, you know, about three and a half to, to $4 million. I guess, just for reference, right now, our station that we're working on up in Hamilton, our latest cost estimate as of December was about 2.8 million, so it was a little bit smaller scale than this, just because we already have a lot of the facilities there, and we're sharing it with the BCRTA. This does not include property acquisition, this is just current-year construction costs. As I mentioned before, we're assuming that the station would be unstaffed, there wouldn't be necessarily somebody there all the time, you know, as a station, you know, operator. It would require your typical utilities you would have for any small municipal building, you'd have water, gas, sewer, electric, communications. We're assuming that the annual maintenance cost for a facility like this be roughly, you know, 100,000 or so. Obviously, somebody needs to, you know, take out the trash, change the light bulbs, cut the grass, you'd have security there, you know, maintain that. But it wouldn't be anything that you wouldn't do in any other type of municipal facility. If there is a dedicated station track and, and switching associated with that, we're assuming at this point that would be maintained by the, by the operator of the service, by the state of Ohio, or by the railroads, and it wouldn't be the responsibility of, of Hamilton or, or the local communities. But we are assuming that the, the station itself, the parking sidewalks, the station building itself, would be the responsibility of the local communities. And that's something that would be fleshed out, you know, again, as ORDC moves forward with their planning process. And then, obviously, inflation's not what it once was a few years back, but it, we're still assuming, you know, realistically, today, the, the earliest that you would probably have a station in operation would be, you know, 2030. So you would tack on another, you know, 25% on top of this for, for inflation between now and then. That was using ODOT's annual inflation estimator. The next steps, really, the, the most important takeaway, I think, in all of this is that the city control the things that you can control, and be engaged in the things that you can't control. In the nearer term, over the next year to year and a half, like I mentioned, ORDC and Amtrak are gonna be undertaking these planning processes. So it's important for the city to be engaged with ORDC, with Amtrak, with their state officials as these plans move forward, not necessarily to say, we have a station site ready to go, but to be engaged in the process, and, and to advocate for, for the city, and also for just passenger rail in general, you know, at the county level, at the, at the regional level, at the state level, at the national level for that matter. You know, like I mentioned, you know, there's a lot of change in the administration going on right now. How the Trump administration views passenger rail still kind of remains to be determined. There really hasn't been a lot said publicly yet about how the, the new administration plans to move forward with passenger rail. But the Biden administration was the most supportive passenger rail administration in decades, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. I guess from a local perspective, as we mentioned, you need a, a location that has at least 500 feet of tangent track, and probably more than that, because you need to have the track coming into the station on either side. There's not that many sites in Hamilton that can accommodate that. You know, we have those two sites that we looked at, and as part of this planning process, we were looking at sites that were available today, that were essentially vacant. We weren't looking at acquiring property, tearing things down, and relocating businesses. But, you know, strategically, you wanna preserve access to the tracks that you have, whether it's, you know, passenger rail's implemented in the next two or three years, not implemented, but planned in the next two or three years, or even a decade or 20 years down the road, you wanna be strategic about preserving access to the track. And, and, you know, part, part with that also is utility services. Both of these sites we looked at have utility service to them, but, you know, because the city does control your, your utilities in a kind of unique position, you don't wanna put a transmission line warming, or, you know, electrical transmission line right where the passenger platform might go someday. So just from a planning perspective, be cognizant of that. From a utility perspective, today, there really is no zoning classification that would, you know, define rail passenger service as a use. You may wanna look at that, especially in, in these two sites that we looked at, you know, to have that as a potential use. And to think about, if you have private developers that are coming in to look at these sites, you know, to keep in the back of your mind that, you know, you still wanna provide some access to the, to the railroad parcels. The rail station is only as good as the connectivity to the rail station is the other thing I think it's important to consider here. You know, both of these sites aren't necessarily immediate to downtown from a walkability standpoint compared to some of the other sites that we looked at and kind of rejected. So it's important to have that transit connectivity with BCRTA, or, or some other operator. You also wanna have good vehicular access, you wanna have the ability, potentially even have rental cars, or shared cars, or bike, pedestrian, you wanna have as much mobility connectivity to these facilities as you possibly can. That's something else to keep in mind as you, as you advance your, your transportation plans on a citywide level, is you wanna make sure that you have at least the ability to provide access to these locations. And, you know, the, the takeaway is be engaged in the near term, on the state and, and the state, local, and federal level, with the passenger rail planning and the freight rail planning. And then long ti, or in the long term, you know, think strategically about property. I wouldn't necessarily advocate going out and spending money to buy property today, but think about that strategically as opportunities might present themselves to presen- but think about that strategically as opportunities might present themselves to preserve that property in the future. And that's the summary of our study. I think we, I guess, didn't uncover any real surprises, I think, from our perspective, but it does illustrate that, you know, this is a long-term horizon effort, and it's not something that's going to be solved in a day or a week or a month. And the assumptions that we put together in our report, like I said, were assumptions. And it's important, really, over the next two or three years to work with the state and work with Amtrak and potential operators, really to hone in on what are all those operational and financial assumptions. You know, it's likely that if passenger rail does come to pass, it's not going to happen under this administration, not because of the politics, but just because of the time and the challenge it takes to put these things together. So whatever happens for passenger rail, it's going to be in the next administration or beyond. So just keep that in mind. We're looking at a five to 10-year process here, most likely, in the best-case scenario. So with that, I'll open up any questions.
When I look at this, there's a figure five in this feasibility study, and I look at all the cities who are either Amtrak existing stations or proposed new Amtrak station, except for Cincinnati, Dayton, Columbus, Cleveland, Hamilton's the largest city. I'd imagine that has some value in a feasibility study when you've got a city of 63,000.
It does, yes, it does. You know, there, and not all the potentials, you know, there's a lot of other cities, I think, that are in your same scenario that want to have a station. I know Springfield obviously was advocating for a station. Even in Cincinnati, with the challenges of getting to Union Terminal with the congestion that's there, that's, you know, kind of part and parcel of this congestion study, you know, they were looking at, if it doesn't stop in Hamilton, does it make sense to stop in Sharonville or some other intermediate stop before you get all the way downtown? So, you know, there are other stations that might be considered, and that's going to be part of this planning process over the next couple of years.
And I see that the closeness or proximity to Miami University, Hamilton is with something that the regional campus was something which you saw as a value, but it's also right at where AmHub is too, you know, the, which I think is going to be one of the biggest, best projects this city has seen in decades for its education.
Right.
Technology jobs and the like. So I, so there are certain unique things about Hamilton that I see maybe other cities probably don't have, which could help, I feel sure.
Right.
That's all I've got right now. Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
House Member Ryan. You're the man.
Thank you so much. Your staff did great. I thoroughly enjoyed reading the report. I've got a few things. I will be as brief as I can. I'm really surprised about the ridership, and I think those are good numbers, you know, potentially 15,000 per year, maybe, you know, 100 per day. I think that's really good numbers. I honestly thought statistically it was going to be lower than that. So those are great numbers. So segue into assuming, what would the ticket price be on the 3C? I mean, 50 bucks?
You know, I hate to speculate, but that's one of the, you know, obviously, that's one of the key elements that they're going to try to define in the service plan over the next year is, you know, what is the market demand? What are people willing to pay? How long is it going to take to get from point A to point B along the line? And, you know, that, and then, you know, there's that, I think I mentioned this before, you have that trade-off of the more stops you have, obviously, the more access you have to the market, but the more stops you have, the longer it takes. So that's kind of the balance that they're going to be looking at, you know, as they get into the planning process, to look at station stops and the frequency of service. Obviously, the more trains you have, the more expensive it is as well, so.
What would be the breakdown from an income standpoint? So for example, you know, is it, are we going to get, you know, 20% of that ticket? Or is the state, you know, how?
It kind of also depends on who the operator is. So right now, I mean, we talked with Amtrak, there's no guarantee that it would be Amtrak. It could be a private operator, and if the private operator is putting all the money into it, essentially, it's, they're a private operator, they get the ticket price. Now, you know, obviously, if you were having your own facility, your own station facility, you know, and you were part of that process, you would, you know, you would try to get some revenue to cover your costs of your local station. I know that, or I know that, you know, Oxford's had those discussions as well with Amtrak. As of right now, they are not getting any ticket revenue from the Cardinal, or they're not planning to get any ticket revenue from the Cardinal. Most cities do not. Cincinnati does not get any revenue from the Cardinal.
Okay.
That all goes to the operator of the service.
I really enjoyed seeing the long-distance proposals by the FRA. It's always, it's always good to dream, and it's always good to plan. And, you know, Council, I hope we really be strategic with our next steps because, you know, what we're doing right now is preparing for the future. And yes, we're trying to get on 3C, but if we can get on the 3C, then there's a big chance that we could service New Orleans and Dallas. So I think it's critically important that we strategically place ourselves as far down the road on this as we can. I was a little surprised that we would be picking up the tab on the track maintenance.
No, no, I guess that's what I was trying to clarify before. So we're assuming that, as of right now, in our report, we assume that if there is a dedicated station track, that wouldn't be the responsibility of the locals. That would be the operator or the railroad, and that would be, you know, taken care of on a statewide basis. It wouldn't be up to each city. Now, depending on the station and the city, you may have to help build some of the connection to your station initially, but in terms of the operating and the maintenance of the track, the switches, the signals, all that stuff, we're assuming would be handled by somebody else. It wouldn't be the responsibility of the locals.
Okay. And on page five of the report, it was the consolidation proposal, so they just, so they want to, I guess, abandon?
I don't know that they want to abandon, but I think it's our understanding that that's the city's position that you would like them to do so. I think there might be some interest there, but that will be vetted out, I believe, as part of the ORDC's Rail Congestion Mitigation Plan Study. I did mention that to Matt Dietrich up at the ORDC, that the city was interested in that. And so they have actually solicited for consultants to work on that project, and they will select a consultant in March for that, and it'll get underway later this summer.
Okay. Finally, the Southampton Crossing, I think that's, I mean, I know we got to vet a little more on that, but what a great site. We have potential development going in right there. Mary, you mentioned, you know, with the draw with the university, and we got the data center going in that area. And with the station potentially being, you know, on the four corners of Jefferson, Lynnwald, there's a good, it's good for us to engage the neighborhood and, you know, make them be a part of our discussions and developments. So I think there's a unique building opportunity for us to reach out to neighborhood to make them a part of this discussion when we get to that point. So other than that, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, too.
Good question. You should mention BCR TA and Oxford. I know that they have some kind of a partnership or relationship. What exactly is that? I'm not sure if I know the details.
Okay, so the BCR TA is building a new maintenance facility, one, and then in that same maintenance facility, there is going to be a transit center there for students. There's a large park and ride, Chestnut Field Park and Ride, just like 500 space student parking in that same area. So essentially, that's going to be a shuttle stop for the university. But as part of that process, it's literally going to be across the street from where we're building the Amtrak platform. And so the BCR TA facility is going to host the waiting room, the restrooms, the display for the trains. And so passengers ideally are going to be able to wait in the BCR TA facility. Amtrak and the BCR TA are currently working out their lease negotiations. So that's an agreement between Amtrak and the RTA. Technically, the city's not part of that process because it's not their facility, but the plan is for it to all work together, you know, is one thing. And of course, right now, the Amtrak is three days a week in the middle of the night. It doesn't really interfere, I won't say interfere, with the BCR TA's operations. But, you know, if it does go to daily service or daytime service, you know, there could be something there. I know there's been some discussion about BCR TA operating a shuttle in conjunction with the train schedule. So when the train arrives, they'd have, you know, either a van or a small coach would pick up, you know, passengers and take them, you know, either throughout the city or to campus, you know, at 2:00 in the morning. So that, I'm not sure that that's been fleshed out yet, but at least conceptually, that's been discussed about trying to have a shuttle from the passengers' platform to the campus and to downtown. Any other comments or questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just technical question. On the difference between the low track and the high track?
Yeah.
You explain what happens if you have a wheelchair-bound passenger on a low track?
So today, what happens is, so on the Cardinal today, if there is, typically, what happens is if you're a disabled passenger, you indicate that when you buy your ticket.
And you showed in the picture that they had a portable.
Yeah.
Wheelchair accessible. My question is, for able-bodied passengers, how do they overcome that 40 inches of gap?
So there is, I mean, there is like a little flip-down step ladder that steps down, so you don't literally have to climb four feet above the platform, but it, you know, you still have to climb a foot.
So each rail car, to enter each rail car, there would be a flip-down.
Right.
Stairs, set of stairs for each car.
Yeah, but it's not a ramp. It's a ladder, a step ladder, basically, and you, you know, you climb on up. So you have, you have to be mobile enough to be able to do that. Well, typically, what happens is if you purchase a ticket and, you know, you know you're disabled, you indicate that on your ticket, and then when you, when the train stops, there'll be an Amtrak staff person on the train that knows ahead of time that you need assistance. They'll get off, they'll get the wheelchair lift, they'll assist you onto the train. But usually, that's, they know about it ahead of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Nap.
Just as a point of reference, when we talked about and listened to the 500-foot, I'll call it siding.
Right.
Train would enter, get up to where the passenger cars are stopped, and then how long does the train stay there? Is it?
Well, it really depends on how many passengers are getting on and off, basically.
So that 100, that 100 people per day variance to whatever.
Yeah, I think for the 3C and D, I think that the thought is it would be like two to three trains per day. So your 100 people per day hypothetically would be 20 to 30 people per train. So, you know, in that case scenario, they would probably be there 15, 20 minutes.
I see.
Maybe.
Maybe. But I knew it wasn't five, but I was only watching an hour, and it was somewhere in the middle, and I appreciate that.
I mean, if you have, if you have all able-bodied students jumping on there, you know, they could be out of there in 10 minutes, but if you need somebody with a wheelchair lift, that in and of itself could take 15 minutes.
And as the city manager asks for that assistance to climb up a couple of feet and conveniently be comfortable on their car, and then for the train to get going and kind of things, that's why I ask if it's 10, 15 minutes, good. It's not an hour.
Right, right, right. And, you know, but even if it's 20 minutes, you know, that's, and you're on the mainline freight track with the number of trains that you have out here, that's kind of a big deal to the NS and CSX.
And a little bit of that, my question is why I ask, yes.
Yeah. Even at Union Terminal, today, they load off the CSX mainline, and again, it's only in the middle of the night, but, you know, the discussions we had with CSX down there, they really want to get the Cardinal off their track down there even, you know, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now have audience of citizens sign the book. Jim Goodman. This brew works. Did you say anything? Mike, I forgot, I forgot to go back to you. Were you going to say anything else at all, Mike? You're good? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time. My name's Jim Goodman. I'm one of the owners and co-founders of Municipal Brew Works at 20 High Street, also resident in Hamilton at 306 Ashley Brook Drive in the tap place at Governor's Hill portion of 17 Strong. So as brewery owner, I'm happy to report that we have reached a terms agreement with the developers of the municipal building that are turning it into a hotel. So we're very happy about that. We plan on being around for a while. But the real reason is what I'll call prosperity problems. These are good problems to have, considering where we were 10 years ago, and that is with parking. Because what is going to happen probably around May or sometime this summer, the construction fence is going to go around the municipal building. We are going to permanently lose all 29 parking spots at the annex side. We're also going to lose about eight to 10 metered spots that go around the building, and some of those will not be coming back. So the reason why I bring this up is just to get this on the table, to make sure that it is front and center. I'm also not one to bring up problems without potential solutions because that's just whining. I understand a parking garage may not be in the works because in my research, it looked like it was going to be about $30,000 or more dollars per spot to construct one. And also something that might fall outside the jurisdiction of the city, but would definitely help is to discuss with other private lot owners, maybe loosen up some of the parking guidelines or the times that you're allowed to park, as well as the county lot. The county administration lot has some signs that have some restrictions of time. But to talk to the Courtyard Marriott, or, you know, now with the new Carbinola restaurant that's going to be opening, Catty Corner to them, there's a bank lot there, too, that has some time restrictions. But maybe if the city could ask some of those lots to open up or to be a little more lenient for parking, especially at the municipal building, you know, that lot is constantly used for the Hamilton Flea, for Rivers Edge. It's used by the Markham businesses. It's used for the Courtyard Marriott overflow when they have events, and then, of course, events at Municipal Brew Works. The other aspect I just kind of wanted to throw out there as a potential is one-way street. It's a two-part plan, one-way streets and nose-in parking. One of the things we've seen at the Markham is with their perpendicular parking rather than parallel parking, you can get a lot more spaces in. The spaces at Markham are about 14 feet wide. I'm a nerd, I've measured. The parallel spots around town are around 23 feet wide, so you get about 37% more space by going nose-in. Going nose-in, though, sticks the vehicles out farther, which means if you did take some of the streets, some of the side streets in Hamilton, not the main streets, but the side streets, and either took away a median, if it was two-way parking or made it one-way parking, all of a sudden, you get more bang for your buck on the curb space. So again, just using what we have, but potentially using it in a better manner and providing more parking downtown for the business core. So that's all I have, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I know we've done pretty well after five parking arrangements, but we've got some very good ones that do work, especially around Billy Yanks and that. We've got some good after-five. I love those. It shows partnership, people working together, using already available constructed parking, you know?
Yeah.
I like the idea of doing more of those, but I'm sure there's going to be some kind of a parking report sooner or later with all the stuff that's going to be happening downtown, if it actually starts happening. We're going to need some kind of a report as to what the short term is going to look like.
Good problems to have.
Yes, it is, short term, long term, but we can.
I'm going to go meet my approachable blind for dinner, so thank you.
Jim, thanks for visiting with us.
Bob Harris out in the hallway. Bob Harris.
Good evening to council and audience of citizens. Tonight, I have maybe three good questions. One I've already shared with the city manager. I'd like to know what we have in place in terms of this DEI and how we are going to treat that as a city. treat that as a city. Number two, we talked about wheelchairs. In Seca's meeting, we talked about crossing High Street and the buttons for people in wheelchairs. And the question was, could they lower those buttons so people using wheelchairs can reach them? Number three was the incident that took place in Lincoln Heights, where we had some people come and rent a truck and a car armed. And I want to know what our city has considered in case we encounter a situation of that nature.
Okay, I'm not sure if that was three or four, but.
Three.
Three only, okay. Well, you know, Bob, we've had discussions before about we don't put up with hate in this town, okay? So I would imagine that there would be law enforcement making sure everything is proceeding as it should, not inciting riots and the like, but I can't totally speak for our emergency plan in that type of situation. Now, I'm sure that we are prepared, but I can't tell exactly what the plan is. Like I said before, we just, we don't put up with hate and we don't see it in this town. Hope we never do. You're crossing High Street. I mean, it's tough to cross High Street as a pedestrian. It's to the point now where I usually just, even if it's not a very long drive, I'll drive across High Street. I hate to say that, but it's, it gets to be a situation where sometimes I don't feel real comfortable. But that's just me. That's just me speaking for myself. Attorney City Manager, can you address anything involving if there was a situation like what Lincoln Heights had? I mean, I, I don't want, I'm speaking only basically for myself, but I'm sure that we, as a city, with our professionals we have in law enforcement, that we'd be doing the right thing the right way.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Candidly, I'm not familiar with the situation in Lincoln Heights. But Bob, I'm happy to talk with you offline after the meeting to discuss further and provide you some more information. You brought up our diversity efforts, and I will address that. We talked about this in our last CAC meeting, and I'll share with the audience and with our folks at home here. In my role as police chief over a period of better part of a decade, we practiced a philosophy of valuing diversity, and that's diversity with a very broad definition. It's the diversity that you see, the diversity of gender and race and ethnicity, but so much more than that as well. It's diversity of background, ideas, beliefs, life experience. We truly value diversity, not just in the police department, throughout our city staff or city team. And the way we go about fostering that diversity is that we recruit for that. We cast a very broad net. We bring a lot of folks to the table. And with that diversity, we move forward and we hire for character. The number one most important question as a prospective employer is, are you a good person? Because if you're a good person, you're willing to work hard, you want to help people, we could teach you and train you to do the work here. And that's, that's our third part, is we develop our folks for success. So recruiting for diversity, hiring for character, developing for success. We're going to continue here at City Hamilton to pursue that philosophy. And again, Bob, I'm happy to talk with you more in depth.
When, when we do, I, I looked at it, and I was in Cincinnati, Serdine, and there was a lot of talk about it. And people come to our city in a mask and they got guns. I hope that our law enforcement would make them take those masks out, check their IDs so we know who those people are and, you know, quell, you know, such hate gatherings of that nature. I know you to be a good man, and I know everybody sitting up here, we do not want to entertain any kind of, you know, hate groups coming to Hamilton to do anything. And so looking at it, it is that who did what? Did they do the right thing? And how would we deal with something like that is what I'm looking for, you know, from the city so that we understand that. And the DEI, yes, we can talk about that and, you know, have an answer for people on how they feel and what they should do. So with that, we can, you know, marinate on those three questions. And what I was really asking about the wheelchair is somebody in a wheelchair cannot reach that button.
I get that, I get that too.
Okay. That was the most important aspect of that. And I, hey, I appreciate, you know, everything that you said.
Vice Mayor Paul wants to say something. Vice Mayor Paulman?
Yeah, I want to, so while Bob's here, going back to the wheelchair and stuff like that, and I'm very familiar with disabilities, the, I'm confused, these intersections are ADA compliant. So the button should be at ADA compliant, shouldn't it? I mean, who did we find out about that? And I've, I know some people who's been in wheelchairs and they can reach those, but I'm just wondering, you know, who you're talking about because those should be, and if they're not ADA compliant with what we've done with the intersections, we need to fix them. We need to figure out, you know, if they're not compliant. But I'm pretty sure they are, Bob. I mean, but I would, I mean, I would, I'm going to go look at a couple of them too, but I do know a lot of people that have disabilities and I want to see if that's, maybe I can ask, I know a couple of people that work right over here on High Street that might, I could ask them a question if they're having a problem with that too. I'd be glad to do that for you.
I appreciate that.
But I, I'm hoping that the intersection was built ADA, when it was built ADA compliant, that that button would be part of that. So I guess somebody in the city, if we could find out, that would be a good help to Bob and myself. I'm curious now.
We'll, we'll check what the standard is and we'll make sure that the buttons in operation here are in compliance.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that up.
Appreciate that. Everybody have a good evening.
And Bob, I want to say that you saw some of our great team tonight. If you were here, not if you were in the room when we had the Black History Month.
Yes.
I mean, diverse, high character, and they've done excellent in their careers. So we got, we got a great team here.
And I appreciate it. I appreciate being able to come and speak to council about the things that people approach me about. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
As long as we work together, we can do anything.
That's correct.
God bless you.
God bless you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we now are done with the audience of citizens. We'll go to the set agenda, and that's staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and also committee of the whole, which gives us time to learn more about some of the matters before us that we'll be voting on. We can ask questions, provide direction, comment on reports. Also, the motion that we, that the regular meeting be recessed, the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second, by Councilmember Nam, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:19. You going to lead us, Mr. City Clerk, in this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Our first presentation will be made by our Director of Utility Operations, Mr. Bill Hudson.
Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton, good evening. I'm here with a request authorization for submission of a loan application to the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Fund. The application's due in March, and the disbursement's supposed to be sometime in April, assuming that that committee does everything on time. All right. The loan applications for the city's water reclamation facility, it's a loan, it's for a design loan application, redesigned the plant's HVAC central design boiler elimination project. Right now, there's just one boiler that was designed to feed the entire facility back in 1970, so it's had 50 years of service, but now we're starting to decentralize that control. So it's going to take a little bit of money to design a new system. So our loan request is going to be for $262,800. Again, assuming we get the permission to submit everything, it would probably be dispersed in April of this year. And that's what state-of-the-art 1970 boiler looks like, just, just so, so when I say we've used it and we've got our money's worth out of it, it's just time to replace the system. And it's in use right now, but it's just something that needs replaced. And we're looking plant-wide, not just plugging a new thing in into an old system. We're looking to reevaluate the entire system, not just one, one piece of it. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Bill, for looking at various options and going after grants. I mean, that's, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, it will be a presentation by our Fire Chief, Mr. Thomas Eichelberger.
Tom Eichelberger, Fire Chief. If you guys recall from the end of last year, I approached you for the same reason. That was our first round of purchasing for the new Life Pack 35 monitors. These are replacing our previously used Life Pack 15 monitors that we've used for roughly 20 years. So this, these are, while expensive, these are a long-term purchase. And so the reason I came last time and the reason I'm here today is to request your approval for another sole source purchase for, for more of these monitors, according to the City of Hamilton Administrative Directive. So as I mentioned, we're wanting to purchase four additional Life Pack 35s. As you can see, they are just shy of 60 grand apiece. That does come with a service package with these monitors, so that's built into the price. And as you can see, the total value of that purchase would be just shy of 240.
Might be a dumb question. Are these expected to last as long with technology? I just, just curious about the, because that's, that's not much per year if you think about it. I mean, if you think about $60,000 over 20 years, that's not much for what they do for our citizens, you know? I mean, it's.
Sure. The expectation is that we would get just as much use out of them, but you are correct with the advancements in technology and as fast as the technology is changing. I cannot predict that, but, but our intention is that we would get just as much use out of these as we have with the previous monitors.
Thank you for getting the best for our citizens.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Next up will be a presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Hello, Mayor, council. I'm Jody Gunderson, Director of Economic Development. The item that I have on before you today is amending emergency ordinance 2005-12-130, extending the residential incentive district for an additional 15 years. The original legislation was passed in 2005. And to help you understand too, this is, in some ways, it's comparable, this legislation's comparable to other tests we do, but this one's very specific to residential and what you can do with it as long, as well as the legislation that goes along with it, the stated purposes and the uses. Pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, the city can extend the incentive district for an additional 15 years. I wanted to give you just at least a brief definition of what the residential incentive district is. And it is a very distinct geographic district. When you set it up, it, it's not like something that covers the entire city. You, in your original legislation, will carve out the legal description of the area that's covered. The RID allows for local governance to, to acquire some of the tax revenue that comes and that's generated from that geographic area for the uses that are outlined in the legislation. Taxpayers that reside within that district pay the same amount of taxes whether it were, it was in the RID or wouldn't be in the RID. And payments that are, that are derived from the area that's in question, those payments come, they're a portion of what the total taxes are, but the revenue is generating, go for the specific improvements. And in the case of Hamilton, it's primarily for the funding of streets.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Jody, kind of a crazy question, but in the legislation, when it names the 10 different areas, three of those 10 are named after schools that are no longer here, like the Lincoln School, the Grant.
Yeah.
Is that going to change as the legislation's updated or does it stay the same?
I mean, it certainly could, but again, it's, it's well-defined, the geographic area, whether it's, it's like a legal description. That legislation itself kind of, it kind of dated itself, to your point. However, there is a legal description that does go with this, so we know exactly what area we're pulling from.
Yeah, it dates me as well, so I know them all. Some folks in this room would not have any idea, so, but, all right, thank you.
That gives me a question. I noticed a different number of parcels in each one. What determines the number of parcels in each district?
Well, that's the, that's, I mean, again, it's the legal description. When you put together the geographic area, each one of those, those districts are going to have those parcels that are associated with them. Some instances, we've had issues where we've gotten in ahead of time and some, some of the land has been subdivided. And that's where we end up having to go in and kind of clean up some of those parcel numbers, but that's primarily how it's, how it's defined, each one of those districts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jody.
Okay, next up for agenda item number four, there'll be a presentation by our City Clerk, Daniel Tidyman. All right, hello, Mayor, members of council. I've got a very short presentation for you tonight. This is a liquor permit transfer application for the BP that's located at 20 North Erie Boulevard. The permit includes a C1, C2, and D6 permit, so this allows for sales of beer and wine to be consumed off premises as well as sales on Sunday. I believe there's no other changes to the way that they're operating today, so this is a simple transfer of ownership. As a legislative authority, you have the option to object to these permits, but staff has determined that there is no reason to object. So with our recommendation, the report is we're just requesting that we do not object. That way, we will inform the state and they can move on with their process. Do we have any questions about this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up for items five through seven, we'll have a presentation by our Executive Director of Neighborhoods, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. The first agenda item from planning is a baseball field expansion at West Side Little League. They are, have a batting cage structure that you see the red triangle over in that picture back when there was lots of snow on the ground. So that, it's the expansion and some of the design and size of the batting structure required planning commission and council review. Any questions on this one?
No.
All right.
Sounds great.
The next one is a right-of-way dedication at the end, basically the end of Arbor Springs. A family has bought the rest of the acreage in the subdivision and is building just two homes, but as part of this proposal for fire access and then homes, but as part of this proposal for fire access and then just general for residents in the neighborhood, they asked for basically a turnaround. And so they are establishing a formal dedicated turnaround at the end of this drive. And so that's what you're seeing today. Any questions? And final one is another right-of-way dedication related to the construction that we've all seen on New London Road, dedicating what was formerly private property as right-of-way for sidewalks and street. Any questions on this one?
Thank you.
And lastly, for item number eight, we'll have a presentation by our Finance Director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, members, Mayor of council, or good evening, Mayor, members of councils, sorry about that. This is our first supplemental appropriation of 2025, and the first item for the general fund is a $450,000 contribution to the Community Improvement Corporation. The CIC board met at the end of December, and the money's gonna be used for a property purchase at 2270 Pleasant Avenue, and also for the, a grant for the expansion of Coolants Plus, and the council has previously passed legislation on Coolants Plus. The next items are from the Hamilton Cap and Debt Fund, that's the general fund cap and debt fund. 217, almost $218,000 is for Main Street Alley concrete reconstruction. It's between C and E Street. 360,000, we're transferring to the Criminal Justice Center. That was borrowed funds at the end of December through the OMAP, that's the Ohio Market Access Program through the State Treasurer. It's for a gas and water main relocation that was done there. And the almost $1.4 million, that's the carryover accounting adjustments. We're re-appropriating the million-dollar state grant that we, we received for the Schuler Benninghoffen, and the remaining funds would be for Rivers Edge and the Bell Line. The Wilks Family Foundation Fund, that is actually a new fund we're setting up. We got a $200,000 grant. Council did back in January vote, and then to receive that grant. But our city arborist, Dave Beeman, he's on top of this. He's gonna be purchasing 1,750 five-gallon container trees, program that runs for five years, this year through 2029. As it says, 875 trees are gonna go out to residents, and 875 trees will be planted on city property. And the final two items is just appropriating the remaining budget as the projects end for the Criminal Justice Center and Fire Station 26. Any questions at all?
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
And that concludes our presentations.
Okay, I'll set the motion. Committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Time is 7:34. I'll set the motion to regular meeting and be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Knapp, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
That time is 7:35. I'll set the motion. Vice Mayor Pullman.
With the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports or the consent agenda and concur on their recommendation.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Knapp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:35. Motion pertaining to legislative items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
A move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:36. So we go to actions pertaining to legislative items. New legislation is first. Then item number nine, prescribing ordinance involving improvements to parcels of property to be considered public purpose.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property within the city for the Dorana Hybrid Incorporated Expansion Project to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing the execution and delivery of a school compensation agreement with the Hamilton City School District, and authorizing school compensation payments pursuant to the school compensation agreement, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 10, prescribing ordinance, very similar to the one that you just read, but this is for the VA clinic.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property within the city for a VA clinic project to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments specifying the purpose for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing the execution and delivery of a school compensation agreement with the Hamilton City School District, and authorizing school compensation payments pursuant to the school compensation agreement, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 11, which is an ordinance involving the job classification registered environmental health specialist in training.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number O E O R 2024-12-117, adopted December 13, 2024, as amended from time to time to establish a classification of the registered environmental health specialist in training, first reading.
Agenda item number 12, prescribing ordinance involving our development fee waiver pilot program.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by enacting Chapter 1313 Development Fee Waiver Pilot Program of Part 13 Building Code to incentivize affordable housing and infill development consistent with the housing needs of the City of Hamilton, first reading.
Thank you. And that's a great title, incentivize affordable housing and infill development consistent with the housing needs. Honest to city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to correct my statement earlier. I am familiar with the situation that Mr. Harris referenced. I just wasn't familiar by the reference to the community, as he referred to. It's all follow-up with him on that issue.
Thank you. Honest to city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I'll make a last call to everyone. If you don't have tickets to go to the Neighborhood Summit on March 1st at Hamilton High School, please get them. They are down to the final few. So we're hopeful that we have a lot of, of course, our city leaders there that are interacting with our citizens. I know we have folks coming from surrounding communities, so we really are down to probably 30 tickets now. I would really encourage to please get your ticket.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I'd like to remind everyone that our Veterans' banners program that has been so popular in 2023, 2024, and now continuing to 2025, the application process for that will wrap up two weeks from now on Friday, the 28th of February. Michael Pittman wrote a wonderful article in the, in the Journal News that was in the paper in the end of January. But importantly, the Hamilton Community Foundation is acting as our fiduciary and our bank to receive your payments and applications, know those are processed, and give it to our committee to be able to vet those. Again, we sure appreciate everyone's patriotic commitment to honor our veterans and those that serve our country, so we still have room to, to be able to take more applications if you wish to, to do that, but please get them into the community foundation by February 28th. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else? I want to say, you mentioned Mike Pittman. He is quite a volunteer mixologist. Had the occasion to see him doing the, the Tom Cruise thing from that old movie, you know, at Pinball Garage on Super Bowl Sunday night. Did a great job. Something I attended last week, what would happen in Butler County if there was a hazmat situation? Well, there was a chemical emergency exercise that took place at ESC, and it was countywide. It had folks from, I think, every city, village, township. Hamilton was very well represented at that event. Cindy Hogg was from the Health Department, I think there was a couple of folks from the Health Department. Liz Hayden was there from Neighborhood Services. We also had Hamilton Police and Hamilton Fire. And I'll just tell you that if that situation happened, just from what time I observed, I think Hamilton would show a lot of leadership in that, and that says a lot about, about our team. I want to point out someone who, Dave Oakley has spoken to us before in the past with his skill set in dealing with this terrible incidence and hazmat. And I just gotta tell you, Chief Eichelberger, he was, he was, his education that he provided, very humble, but he just kind of said, this is what would happen, and, and so I totally think, there's that, was that, that small command group, if there was anything like that, I'd like to think that Dave Oakley would, would be there, because, I'm not kidding you. Very impressed by him and the entire city team that was there. Cindy, Liz, Matty, everybody was there from the city was active, and I think we showed leadership across the entire, entire county, so. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Going back to Bob Harris, hopefully he's listening, but I just, I'm reading on the ADA here. The button's gotta be 42 inches high from the, from the ground and with a max of 48 inches, so I guess we could check those. So that's, but I like that he brought that up, and I may email him tonight and tell him if he's not listening, at least put an email out to him.
Please do.
I'll go take my tape measure downtown here this week. I'm gonna carry one.
Anyone else on council? Is there an executive session this evening, Mr. City Manager?
There is, Mr. Mayor, for one reason, to consider potential information related to personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance.
Okay, so we got a couple of motions here. Is there a motion executive session? You found it be necessary to protect the interest of the applicant of a possible investment or expenditure of public funds made in connection with an economic development project.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, that was at 7:43. Second motion, set the motion to council go into executive session, purposes stated by the city manager.
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Knapp. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mayor, before we do that roll call, I would like to ask that the city manager amend his request. I believe there should be some discussion about the appointment of public officials in executive session. Is that, or am I mistaken?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Certainly. Mayor, additional reason would be to consider the appointment of a public employee or official. That's it.
Okay. Yep, okay.
There's a lot more, there's a lot more there, but that's all we need.
Okay, so, Vice Mayor Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn, that will go into executive session for those two stated purpose. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, 7:45, go into executive session for those stated purposes, and then come out just to adjourn the meeting. So the meeting is essentially over with, except for our executive session business.